All right. So it is 4:07 on Saturday, January 9th, and I'm going to call this meeting to order. This is a work session meeting, and so I will do roll call just to make sure that our microphones and our cameras are all working. But we don't need to approve an agenda because the agenda is just a there for the public to know what we are, we are doing. It's just a work session, so it's a free, open conversation. So Sarah, is your microphone working? Okay?
Yes, it is.
All right, Hannah, can you hear us and can we hear you?
Yes, I can hear you.
All right, Scott?
Yep, I'm here.
Laura?
Yes.
All right, Forrest?
Good to go.
Cool, Jeff?
I am still in transit, but yes, I can hear you fine.
All right, let us know when you land the plane. Joel, can you hear us okay?
Yes.
Great, and Chelsea? Can you try your microphone again, Chelsea?
Yes, I can.
All right, so Chelsea, for notes for the work session, you, you really don't have, there's not really any standard format expectations, just whatever you feel like you want to add. I usually keep these reasonably brief, but it's, I guess it's totally up to you. But it's less, less structured.
So I do take, I do take notes or I don't?
Yeah, you do, but it doesn't need to be as detailed as a normal, as a normal meeting, that's all, just so you can engage in the conversation. So, all right, so Cam, what I will do is I will switch hosting duties to you, so you can kind of share as you wish. So I'll start to share.
Jamie said she was looking for the link as well. I'll forward the email to her.
Okay. All right, I have made you the host, Mr. Sattler.
All right, just a moment here.
Sure.
All right, so thanks, everyone, for taking part of your Saturday to do this. Jan's looking to come in, now she's in. My goal today is to just really, as the board goes, to make you comfortable with what we're seeking to do as a school and why we're seeking to do it. And to answer any questions you have when it pertains to, you know, why this and not that, or just really to give you a sense of what we are getting into, you know, and the why behind it. So my goal is to keep this under an hour or around an hour, but some of that depends on the questions you have. And just when I say that, please don't feel like you can't ask questions for time's sake. Like this is, my goal here is to give you all the information you need to be comfortable. And then as we move forward in the next coming months, we don't have to kind of keep revisiting the why and the groundwork that's being laid here. So please use this time to ask questions and get the information you need to feel comfortable as a board member. So with that, I'll kind of jump back and forth between this PowerPoint and a couple of other documents that will support this. But really, the goal today is to give you a sense of where we're at and where we're trying to head as a school. And really, there's two paths, well, I guess three paths, but really only two paths. And those paths are doing nothing, not changing anything as for where we're at today and moving forward. That is the least likely and most forward damaging path we could do. The second path is a remodel of the upper school while also refinancing our current bond structure with the K building and getting everything under kind of the same umbrella and, and getting a better deal for ourselves. And then the third path is not remodeling the upper school, but still pursuing the refinance of our current bond deal while also completing the K campus. I will say out front, I am an advocate for wanting to remodel the upper school and putting everything into the same umbrella. But we'll discuss the optics of it all as we move forward here. So this is currently, the screen you're seeing right now, this is currently where we stand as of today. The upper school is under a word I'm looking for, it's a mortgage with our former landlord Bob McCullough, a contract for deed, that's where it was looking for. We have a contract for deed with Bob McCullough for six and a quarter million dollars. You can see the monthly payment and the yearly payment. And this is at a 5% interest. The 5% runs for the next five years. At that five-year point, it takes our, the current interest rate and adds, I think it's 1.25%, I don't remember the percent it adds on, but it'll take, so it could possibly go up or possibly go down based on what the housing or the, not the housing, lending market looks like in five years. Then we have the middle school lease termination. This is what it costs to get out of our middle school lease at the former middle school building. It was 1.1 million, 100,000 of that was paid upfront when we closed the bonding deal and did the K campus. The monthly payment's just over $10,000, yearly payment's just over $120,000, and that has nine and a half years remaining on it. This piece here is actually at a 4% interest rate. So this is something we've actually talked about pulling out of the umbrella deal, the whole deal, since the interest rate's only at 4%. It actually might make sense to keep it out of it instead of bringing it into a new deal that might have a higher interest rate. So that kind of remains a little bit in flux, but it's about a million dollars remaining on that deal. Oh, excuse me, the K8 lease is for $14 million. It's $86,000 a month right now. That is on a four-year escalation, a four-year growth model to align with our growth projections to become a fully enrolled school in the next four years. That is at seven and a quarter percent interest. And again, like I said, with increases for five years to get up to that kind of full enrollment model. That's a pretty high interest rate, and that's really the bulk of what we're looking to knock down with whatever deal we pursue. So that gives us a total currently of 23, just over $23 million. About 52% of this right now is covered through LeaseAid. LeaseAid is funding from the Department of Education. That is a per pupil funding measure, about $1,300 per pupil. So as our enrollment goes up, LeaseAid goes up, and we want to obviously maximize as much LeaseAid as we can. So another way to look at this is currently we're pulling about 40%, just over 40% of this funding out of our general fund right now to cover just our facilities. Okay, so that's where we're at currently. I'm going to speak first about the K8 buildout. And if, you know, if you have questions along the way, maybe good to put them in the chat. And Chris, if you want to moderate that a little bit, I'm just going to talk right now. We focused on that. So the K8 buildout, this is necessary, this is absolutely necessary, and it's been in the design from the current bond run and build out that we are at a point where we need to build out the remainder of the school to support our growth. Every classroom right now is filled. We're looking to grow as a school, and we need additional classrooms to do that. This is budgeted for $750,000. This will get us five additional classrooms, three of which would be the fourth grade pod that hasn't been built out yet. So we'll get like all of our pods in place for K through five. It would give us some middle school office space, just some more office space, but really we're thinking about having the middle school office space be on the second floor and then some extra storage as well. So, and then the big piece of this will be the Becoming Center, which as you drive into the K campus and you see those windows in front, Becoming Center would be the second floor of that, kind of a media space, if you will. Excuse me, the timeline for this is from June through August this summer. That is, it's just a necessity for us to grow, that is an absolute necessity. We need to get that part going. So I'd like to have your mindset that this is just kind of a non-negotiable. If we're going to grow as an elementary, this has to get done. So the upper school remodel, this is the part that we are looking to do. This is a complete remodel of the first and second floors everywhere except the Activity Center, that will remain as is. But otherwise, we will knock everything down and start over. And not only will we start over, but we will, for those of you that know or remember this, the admin area has a high ceiling, or it doesn't even have a high ceiling, but there's nothing built over it right now. We will expand out the second floor over the admin area, and then we will just build all out in a much more efficient way. So if we were not to pursue this remodel, and these are some of the big considerations as a board that I want you to be aware of. If we didn't do anything, the current building that we're in right now is old, and there are some significant upgrades that will be needed within three years. The windows in frames, especially, most of the windows on the first floor, they are leaking and rusting out. There will have a need to replace those out. The HVAC units on the roof are old. We've had two of them replaced in the last five years. The roof itself has some leaks in it, as Chelsea can attest to, because every single year she gets some drips through the skylight in her roof. Carpeting and painting, the carpeting will have to be redone, painting will have to happen, parking lot has to be resurfaced. For any of you who drive in the, the admin side of the parking lot, it's pretty rough. And there's some grading landscaping that'll have to be done, because currently when there's a hard rain, we expect some water to leak in down by the concession area. So if we choose not to pursue a remodel, or frankly, if the numbers don't allow us to, I want you to be prepared that there are some big pieces we'll have to consider and funnel money into in the next few years in order to keep that building even at a status quo. So if we look at a remodel, what do we get? So new space would allow for all of our specialists, so the music, art, and science rooms to be on the first floor and in appropriately designed spaces. An efficiency of space will increase our classroom, our total number of classrooms from 16 to 20. It'll allow us to move our lunchroom, which is currently upstairs, down to the first floor. And music from upstairs down to the first floor, and then it'll also allow for the building to be partitioned off. So when we have after-school events, think basketball games or NHD or veterans' performance or music concerts, we're able to section off the, what will be the cafeteria into the athletic area from the rest of the building. It'll allow upgrades to be consistent with what our current 8K8 building is. So the campuses are on par with each other. And along with that, it'll give us an opportunity to kind of rebrand upper school programming and get a sense of really ultra-defining who we are and what we want to be. So that's what we're looking to do with this remodel. So what's the budget look like, right? What's this going to cost us? So in the special meeting agenda packet, there are two budgets in place that I'd like to take a look at right now. So if you give me just a moment to move to that, I will look first at the K8 as, again, hopefully that is not as much in question, but just give you a sense of what we're getting for the, for the bid. I think the best way to make this as large as possible here. Just do it this way.
So as I said, Cam, before you get into some of the specifics, I just want to recap just a couple of things that popped up in the chat. So the, the middle school build out, the completion of the middle school, that includes millwork, right?
We're looking to add in millwork for the second floor, correct?
Yeah, 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 sounds good. That's, that Forrest had asked that, and I was pretty sure I knew the answer to that, but I want to make sure it gets in the recording as well. Yeah. And then, I think, go ahead, sorry, go ahead Forrest.
Yeah, I was just going to ask, Cam, is there anything else that was trimmed out of the original budget that would be included in the buildout? Um, possibly. So it depends on kind of how smoothly this bonding process goes and what kind of money we have left. But we're looking to bring in things that we had cut out previously, like the, we want to do a Sheridan stage in the gym area. Sheridan stage is like a stage act folds up into the wall and then comes down. They have that for performances. We're looking to add in potentially three rows of bleachers in the Activity Center. We're looking to add in, what else? We have, we have some bids out for fencing along the north side of the parking lot by that pond. And we have some bids out for gutter work along the front of the building, coming off the roof line there. If you, when the kids go out to catch the bus, the water runs off the roof line, and we'd like some gutter work there. So things like that, potentially, just kind of depending on the numbers and what we can do. We'd like to look at what it would cost to grub out the front area of the land and possibly put in another field right on the entrance by a 232nd by the entrance there, hopefully enough space for like a soccer field. But that, that just kind of depends on what kind of numbers work out with that.
Thank you.
Yeah, for sure. Thanks, Chris, for stopping me there. I was, I was on a roll.
You bet.
So I'll keep going here. The, the budget for the K8 building. So the big pieces are, again, the millwork will be added in. This is all kind of numbers that our construction company, Rochon, has put together, knowing what it costs to do the rest of the building. So we, we're pretty confident. In fact, what has happened in the past, a good thing for you to know as a board, is once we decide on that number, whatever it may be, so in this case, we're looking at 543,000 for construction, and then another 150,000 to 200,000 on top of that for a contingency. Contingency would just mean if something were to go wrong or the ability to add things back in. But that 543,000, once we sign that contract, what that means is the construction company is held to that number. So if there were any logistical pieces or things that go wrong that escalate that number, we are not on the we're not, we're not held responsible for any amount of money that's over that 543,000. On the other side of it, if they're able to accelerate construction for some reason, or find some deals out there, and they can do the project for 520, then, then they get that 23,000. So really, it's just if we sign on for 543,000, then that's what gets paid. On either way, if, I hope that makes sense, that we can't go over the construction company, we have the ability to go under. And really, the way I think about it is if they have the ability to go under, that means things are going really well for us. So we're getting the product that we're seeking. So that's what that means when that final number is put out there, but right now it's spit out at 543,000. So with that, are there any questions on the K8 buildout and what we're looking?
Yes, Cam, I have a question.
Yeah.
So I am wondering, as I look at the Rochon plan there, I do not see anything for sound abatement, gymnasium. I do not see the Sheridan stage. Would those come from a separate contractor then?
Those would come out of the contingency funding. Yep, so this is just the, the estimate to build out the remaining space. It doesn't have anything in there that is beyond that space that isn't built out right now. But that's what, we have some contingency funding in place to fill that in.
Thank you.
Yep. Any other questions with the, the K8 budget? Okay, and again, we can come back to that if need be, but I will keep moving at this time. So we'll look at the upper school budget and what that is looking like in its current state. So this one's going to be a little more, because it's a much bigger project, a little more involved. But a lot of this are numbers that are put in place based on the square footage of the building. That's how initial estimates are made. You take the square footage, you take the number of classrooms you're seeking and the number of students that would be in those classrooms or have the capacity to be in those classrooms, and that's what draws out these numbers. So this is a first estimate that would be solidified further once plans and drawings are a little more, excuse me, a little more flushed out. You saw at the last board meeting at our current stage of planning and what those two floors would look like. So that'll be flushed out to the foot once we take that next step of agreeing to moving forward. So these are budgetary numbers that are based off square footage more than anything else. But again, this is a company that has done a number of charter schools. We have no reason to question the basics of these numbers at this point. Some of the biggest pieces here involve, again, the millwork of the classrooms, and this is something that, as Jamie and I have discussed, we don't know how much millwork we might need or want in classrooms right now. I don't, I certainly don't think they need to look like elementary classrooms have that much storage space and cupboards and things like that. But possibly, you know, some tall boys or some shelving in there, so that may be a number that could be drastically different. I had put in the PowerPoint, but it's not in front of you right now, that we are not planning on having lockers in the school, and the lockers is something that's over $100,000. Right down here, $112,500 put in for lockers, that's something that we don't plan on having in the building, that's just one of their, can their baseline numbers. So that is number, that funding measures that we could just put somewhere else or just save on the project. The building itself, we're looking to have mainly concrete floors. It's going to look a lot like the K8 building does. Concrete floors in the hallways and classrooms, the front entrance will kind of snazzy up a little bit with some tile and some different features. But in general, we're looking for the building to be practical and efficient. And so this is what the budget looks like for that, so roughly 5.7 million, and then about another 300,000 in contingency funding for this project.
Yeah, Chelsea, Chelsea has a question.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, I'm just, was going to advocate for if you're going to put millwork in the classrooms, bookshelves, like some kind of shelving would.
Sure, yeah, and that's something we can even personalize to different classrooms as well. There's a lot of play with that. Right now, what they have in there for millwork is kind of a basic set of a tall boy structure with some shelving units, like, kind of like what the K8 classrooms look like, if you've been in there and see what they look like, that's what this is based on. So, but yeah, absolutely, that's something that we can play with as we get a little further down the line.
And Cam, all, this all includes, I was scrolling through it, but honestly, like, I knew you'd be walking us through it. So this, this, this includes moving in and out costs and demolition and everything, cleanup and everything, and?
So this does have demolition in there, 225,000 for demolition. It does not have moving costs in there. Moving is, is something that the school would take on as part of that cost. I had a mover in here last week, because you saw him in your classroom, getting bids on that. I would expect, I don't have the bid back yet, I would expect the cost for moving to be somewhere around eight to 10,000.
Oh, okay.
Move everything into the gym and then move it back into classrooms.
Much, much less than I thought it was, than I would expect, so that's good.
Yeah, should be somewhere around.
Yeah, it's because they're not going anywhere. They're, they're basically staying in-house to the gymnasium, and then we're not hopefully having to pay for any pods anywhere.
Right.
Storage, so.
Yep. So with other, oh, go ahead, sorry.
Yeah, just landscaping and, and and parking lots and grading, that kind of stuff, this is all an aspect of that as well?
Yeah, those are all considerations that'll be put into the final product. Yep.
Okay, okay.
So again, just in your heads, you should be thinking about 6 million for this project. You know, that, that's a pretty safe number for getting all the things we need and then a couple of things we want. All right, so with that, I will, I will move forward once again. I'll come back to PowerPoint. So again, just some points on that. We won't have lockers, sound abatement will be something we add in. Again, carpet, carpet, concrete flooring with carpeting in appropriate areas, and then the front entrance having kind of a different, you know, wow factor, if you will, much like the K8 building. So a timeline for this, so we have our meeting today, and then on Monday, the goal of those meetings is to have you receive a bulk of info and ask questions and get comfortable with it. The February meeting is where we hope to ask for an approval of the financing amount for the bonds. So that's where we're going to say, we plan on going to market for $32 million. Hopefully, we'll get this interest rate and, and we'll go from there, so we'll look for approval at that point. Then that, that bonding will happen in late February. By then, we'll have our result, we'll know, like, here is what is on the table for us. And that will allow us to close on those documents. Closing takes about a month to do that. And then once we're closed, construction could start conceivably the very next day. Really, what we're looking for with construction would be mid-April. The demolition would take, who knows, a couple of weeks, or be some play there in terms of the move happening to get all the items from the classrooms into the gym, and then demolition happening and then construction happening. But we're looking about mid-April for that to occur. And then June would be when the construction would start on the K8 building, essentially a day after students, students leave, they'd be able to do that.
So a couple, so how many weeks prior to, would the expectation be, how many weeks prior to construction would we be out of our classrooms and, and doing things learning? How long would that take?
Um, so the goal is to make that as short as possible, right? We want students in for as long as possible. The variables in play are movers think that this will be a two-day move to do because of all the, the different classrooms we're looking, looking to move things out of. And then the other possibility in this is there's a number of things in the upper school right now that we could probably sell, that we could probably have a auction for. And so those things we might want to, I don't know yet whether it means we do that ourselves, like, like things like doors and toilets, like, this sounds how scary, but those are things that people will buy, and if we can get money back for it. So we'll have to have a little bit of conversation about whether that's worth the time it takes to uninstall and put those in spots where they can be auctioned off versus just a complete demo. But that's when I say mid-April, really what we're looking for is once we say to the students, you know, your last day is Wednesday, middle of April, that Thursday, something is happening in the building. You know, whether it's the move or demolition or both, something is happening. So that, that's a area that's still a little bit roughly defined, but, but that's what will be, you know, and all that depends on what the, the bond market and final purchase price is. We'll know that by the end of February. And staff will know that as soon as possible, so then they can start planning for bringing home their own items and getting their classrooms set up for that. All right. Moving forward, so this is the preferred option that we want to seek, that I want to seek that I'm hoping the board is also on board with here. This is an umbrella bonding, so this is taking all of our previous costs and going out to market and, and trying to find a rate that is more suitable to the school and gets everything under the same payment plans. We have a single buyer, if you will. We're making a single payment to them. It just puts everything into one. So the 14 million for the K8 lease that's currently there, the goal is to decrease, decrease that from seven and a quarter to around 5%. A bond premium, so this is the cost, and this is an estimate right now, this hasn't been defined, this hasn't been approved, but this is the cost it'll take to buy us out of our current deal with the Michelle Newlin, the financier that a couple of years ago said she would take on this deal. So in order for her to let us out of that deal, which she does not have to do, she is under no obligation. We signed a 35-year lease with her. She could just sit back and say, I got you for 35 years. But she's willing to do this, she's willing to let us out, she recognizes that we could get a much better deal out there, but it comes at a cost. So this is the, kind of the market rate, if you will, of what a deal like this would cost to get out of. So that's the $420,000. That will be firmed up once we know that we're heading to market with a price. The upper school building buyout, so the 6 million is about what we'd have left on our current contract for deed with McCullough. And again, that's currently at 5%. The middle school lease buyout, this is what I said earlier, that may be pulled out of the deal because this is at 4%. It may not make sense to keep this in the deal if it has a lower interest rate than what we expect to get going to market. The 750,000 is the K8 buildout cost, the 6 million is roughly the upper school remodel cost. And then 6.1 million is what it costs to do a deal like this. It's what it costs to go to bond and to get financing and to refinance. 2 million of that is soft costs. Soft costs are things like just the cost of issuance of, of documents, issuance of the bonds. 4 million of hard costs are things like payment to the finance people that write the deal, the underwriters, the insurance people, the lawyers to oversee the contracts and things like that. So no doubt is it spendy, but that's what it costs to make something like this happen. There's really no way to get out of that type of cost, which is also why this is something that we really need to consider as a board, that you only want to do this once. You know, that's the end goal, because the next time, if we didn't do the remodel right now, and we wanted to wait three or four years and wait till enrollments establish and things like that, which are very valid. But if we wanted to go to bonding, then it's going to cost us another $6 million to do that. That, you know, so if we're looking to do a $6 million project, so maybe not 6 million, it's kind of scaled out to the, the size of the project, but it's certainly an amount, right, 20%. If we had to do a $6 million remodel three years from now, you know, 20% of that, 1.2 million or so is going to go to just the cost of making that deal happen. So that's something to take into consideration as we think about this. So all in all, we're looking at about $34 million deal. So that's something to take into consideration as we think about this. So all in all, we're looking at about thirty-four million dollar deal. Uh and all of the numbers that you've seen have been run at a five percent interest rate. So in other words, we'd be expecting a company to take us on at five percent. It is possible it could be lower, it is possible it could be about a quarter of a percent of higher. I think anything beyond a quarter of a percent higher, so five and a quarter percent or more. Really makes us question whether it's worth it or whether we could actually fulfill what it would take to make that happen. Um but five percent seems to be a relatively safe number to consider. Uh we've been, so a number of you have been through this before and know what that means, why I say relatively safe. You don't know until until it happens, but that's what the market's kinda saying at this point. The other option for us to consider, and and really, I don't even wanna say consider as much as this would be our plan B. And I'll explain a little bit what that means, but it'd be refinancing without the upper school remodel. Um this is something that I think at at bare minimum, we have to go forward with as a school. We have to get off that seven and a quarter percent bond rate. Um so again, this would be putting all the other pieces, so the upper school contract for deed. The premium to get out of that current lease agreement. Uh the middle school termination, which again may be pulled out of the deal based on percentage. To complete the build-out and then the bond financing to complete this size of deal, so four and a half million instead of six million. Uh would be a total of a twenty-six million dollar deal. Uh so again, these numbers are run at five percent, but it's very likely that this deal will come in at a lower interest rate. The main reason for that is because the building is actually built, the K building is established. Students are inside of it, and those are two very large factors that were not present when we went to bond the first time. We didn't have the building, we didn't have the students, so we feel very confident that we could get a rate lower than five percent for this type of deal. So to compare and contrast these these two deals, the number of years would be the same. The interest rate again depends on on what that ends up being, what the companies end up pursuing us at. The debt service, so the debt service is what will be owed uh monthly on these deals. I actually, that might be yearly, monthly, that seems high, monthly, I think that's yearly.
Um that's gotta be yearly.
Yes, that is yearly, okay. Uh so it's significant, right? It's four hundred thousand dollar difference, but again, that that means the upper schools either remodeled or not, that that's the give and take with that. Uh the max rent, so that's the lease aid revenue that we will be getting from the state of Minnesota, and this is based on full occupancy. So that that three or four years down the road when we're at full occupancy, we could expect one point five million. Coming in from the state of Minnesota, based on our current numbers, that also might go up or down based on legislature. But the amount of money we'd be spending out from general funds would be about five hundred and fifty thousand. Uh with the remodel and about a hundred thousand without. Currently, today, we're spending over seven hundred thousand. Out of general funds to do what we're doing if we do nothing else. Which again is why I I don't think that's a consideration of those three um options I shared in the beginning. So this is what we're looking at. Um the long-range budget forecast, we'll move to that in just a moment, but I wanted to show you what the enrollment gains are based on those budget forecasts. Uh in order to kinda hit those projections we put forward, it would mean that we're looking to gain a hundred and three students. To start next school year, so next September, we're looking to gain a hundred and three students from where we're at currently. And then another ninety-two students the year after, fifty-one the year after that, sixty-six and seventy-six the year after that, to get us to full enrollment. Uh a hundred and three may seem like a lot, it's eighteen percent, but I wanna put in front of the board again that last July. We were at six hundred and twenty-four students. That was on our roster, committed to come to our school before uh COVID did what it did, and we ended up. In the position we're at right now, but we were at six twenty-four. This this hundred and three were based off our current five hundred and sixty. So we were looking at to increase up to about six hundred and seventy students. Uh five sections, five sections of students. I I absolutely think that is doable. Especially based on what we saw last summer. I just, I think that is a number that we can absolutely hit, if not exceed. Uh going in summer twenty-two, same thing, that's adding, you know, just over four more sections. Uh and then just under three sections and so on. So that's what. The enrollment gain we're looking to make in the next few years. And to be totally honest with you, board, uh enrollment drives everything always. No matter what we choose or no matter what we move forward with, if we're not hitting numbers like this, we're gonna struggle either way. It doesn't matter whether we remodel the upper school or not, if we're not able to make these types of gains, we will struggle as a school. So i- if the enrollment piece is a concern for you, which it always is, I promise you, no one's more concerned with it than I am. Uh just know that it's gonna be a concern no matter what happens moving forward. With that, I wanna take a moment to look at those budget forecasts. Again, I know I'm talking a lot here, but the goal was to put this in front of you so you could see it. Back second here. So we'll look first at what we're seeking, the budget forecast with the remodel. Uh so again, here's the enrollment chart, there'll be another slide coming up that shows this, so I'm gonna skip through that momentarily. Uh but the numbers you're seeing here are essentially taking our last two budgets, which have been approved and are in place, so. For nineteen twenty and for twenty twenty-one, taking those last two budgets and just scaling out. What we're doing as a school right now. So five years from now, these numbers, just the one thing I know is it won't look like this. But it's taking the numbers from our first year and scaling that out by a certain percentage to get to. The numbers we have right now based on enrollment and the per pupil aid. Factors in this are how many new staff we hired to fill the extra posit- the extra sections that we'd be filling with enrollment, when we choose to hire them. Uh we're not taking into account anything drastic like other grants or other pieces that the government may have in play. So this is just kind of a snapshot of what the next five years would look like, really if nothing else major changed. In terms of legislation, in terms of the federal government, in terms of. Anything happening at the school that would be completely unforeseen. Um you know, catastrophes or on the other end, or an extreme gain in enrollment. This is just taking where we're at right now and scaling that out for the next five years. And what's important about that. Is these bottom numbers. The fund balance and the days cash on hand, which actually isn't on this chart, but which is just the number of days we're in school. Uh divided by our our uh amount of revenue. Um so our our fund balance, this one you see right, do you guys see my mouse moving when I do that? I don't even know if you do it. You do, okay, so this number right here is extremely current. This is what we're talking about on Monday, this is what Jan will be. Uh presenting on Monday for our updated budget. Um we've lost seventy students since June. Um since what we had passed in June, that that's not. Much of a surprise or shouldn't be much of a surprise, we've talked about that, you've seen the enrollment charts, but this is what the dollar value of that looks like. Um so this is current, right here, the the four hundred and six thousand deficit. Looking at next June, so this is climbing out of that, those next five years. Based on the deal that we're seeking for thirty-four million at five percent. So the idea is that after five years, hitting those enrollment projections, we would be at nineteen percent fund balance. We would have a remodeled upper school, we would have full enrollment, we would have staffing to support that. Um that's what this would look like based on today's numbers. That's a, it's not shining, it's not a, it shouldn't make you feel uh like bragging, but it's doable. It it's, it's a challenge, but it's doable. It it's what we can absolutely make happen.
Cam, Sarah asked in the um in the chat whether or not Jan has heard, uh if we were able to meet our. Expectations to have the PPP remain a grant and and not have to pay any of that back.
Uh it's a great question. We are still in conversation with them. Again, we feel very strongly that we have met the expectations. We just haven't had the bank as of yet be willing to submit the loan. Um there is no reason to think that we have fallen outside of that, that we have uh. Uh spent money in areas that we shouldn't have. We feel very confident that we've met the expectations for that. We just haven't had the bank. At this point, they they've been gathering information, they just haven't pulled the trigger on submitting the forgiveness application. It frankly, it's been a little bit frustrating. Um we'll talk a little bit more about that on Monday, but we still feel very confident that we will. It just hasn't happened yet.
Cam, you mentioned to me earlier this week, looking at um round two of PPE. Did you, I don't know if you had any chance to look into that this week, did you find anything else?
Yeah, I looked at it. Uh one of the main considerations for round two of PPP is that you have to be able to show a twenty-five percent. Decrease in funding from last year to this year. Uh I don't think we can do that. Uh it just based on, we're essentially held even with funding. It looks like a decrease because we budgeted for more students. But the actual revenue coming in has been pretty consistent from this year to last year, so I don't think we'll meet the criteria of that twenty-five percent decrease. Um would have been nice, I don't think we were there. In fact, that would have presented other obstacles if we're down twenty-five percent.
And Forrest asked about the enrollment uh goal projections, if we felt like that was realistic to add a hundred by next year, you had those numbers up previously.
Yep, yeah, so let's let's go to that. Great question. Uh like the next slide will bear that out a little bit. Right, so where's that that hundred people come from? Uh so this is full year twenty-one, this is where we were at as of uh like late November, early December. So the numbers here are pretty close to where we're at currently. So how do we get to that next year? Well, the thirty students in kindergarten, we're looking to add fifteen more students uh that aren't currently enrolled in LA to come into first grade. That's something we've been able to do, obviously, the last two years, we started out with twenty-eight and started out with thirty, and we've been able to bump those up. We added thirteen. More from last year to the to this year, so looking to add about fifteen more there. Uh about fifteen more from first grade to second grade. Uh about fifteen, so it's about fifteen more from each grade level. So we're trying to bring in fifteen more students from what's currently enrolled. To what'll be enrolled next year. We think that's a very bull, very doable number, based on what we've seen these last two years. And based on where we were at last summer, again, before COVID. Um Forrest, you might start feeling the effects in the next couple of weeks of a number of students coming into your classes uh that are new. We've actually reached out to a number of the families that had initially applied and wanted to come and then ultimately decided not to. We reached back out to and we've had a number of them say like, yeah, you know what, we we are still gonna come, we're gonna make that happen. We're expecting uh really, right now, in order between like eight to fifteen new students start at semester in the K building. Um which is great for us, it's kind of a jumpstart on these numbers. We're also looking at, as we discussed last year, eighth and ninth grade having more than the the standard sixty-six. Um so the the line numbers here would indicate an increase that we need to hire another teacher to take on these numbers. So our first grade, uh we could possibly get, get, we could get by forty-five. If we knew forty-five kids were coming, we could stay with two teachers, we'd be fine. Um but it's an area where we look at hiring on that third teacher, if we start, we don't wanna say no to any family at this point. Um so this is an area we look to increase. At fifty-five, we we need a third teacher in second grade, we need a third teacher in fourth and fifth. Uh and then the circles indicate when that that section's essentially full, when that grade level's full. So you can kinda see how that starts to happen in the middle school and in upper school and then eventually all the way through. So this gives a sense of how we get those hundred students. Um again, I feel really confident that we can bring in quite a bit in K through six and then fill in in the middle and upper.
So Cam, Jeff asked if um I, and I think he means from my, from a financial perspective with regards to the bonding deal, what, what, what are the um. Implications if we aren't meeting our budget, our um our uh enrollment projections each year outside of. We're not bringing in as much money and so we're gonna have to eat into our fund balance potentially or um etc. Or if there's holdback, etc. Can you talk about that?
Great question. So when you do a bonding deal, the bond will, the the deal will come with covenants. And those covenants will be based on debt service ratio, which means your ability to pay back the debt you owe. Without getting into a ton of details, the debt service ratio will probably be around one point one to one point one five. Uh percent, which really means just we need to cover enough money. Um to make sure that we're we're able to pay off our debts, and that would, if need be, if we're not meeting enrollment projections, that would come out of general revenue. Right, which we would supplant one of two ways. We would either decrease our fund balance or we would make cuts to the budget to make that happen. Uh the other covenant is days cash on hand. Uh and it's similar, it it's how much money you have in the bank, your fund balance. Divided by how many days you're in operation and that needs to cover. The ideal, I think we're looking at somewhere between uh thirty to forty-five days cash on hand. So what that would mean is if for some reason funding were cut off completely, we could carry our business for another thirty to forty-five days. You know, um i- it's kind of a weird thing to consider, but essentially it's saying like, do you have enough money in the bank to survive if things happen, right? We would make those, and really also comes down to is, as long as we pay our rent. Our our lease, as long as we're paying that, we're not gonna get kicked back from the company. In terms of how we're choosing to pay that, what we're doing to make those payments happen. Um cuz they're getting paid. They have no reason really to say like, I don't like how I'm getting paid, there's, I'm getting paid, that's, that's fine, we're not gonna look into it. But we have those covenants in place. But again, I go back to if we're not meeting enrollment projections, we're gonna have issues always. That no matter what scenario we're looking at or where we're at as a school. You know, so that that's the inherent risk with anything we do going forward.
We started, uh Sarah asked if we have started to to talk to families for next year at all uh with regards to. And in response to our marketing campaigns that we're attempting to push out, have we heard, have we, do you have any data on that that we can share?
Um not quite sure what the question, but we are, the marketing campaign is in full swing. We have been getting leads from the marketing campaign. Uh again, we've been reaching out to families who initially showed interest in North Lakes and a number of them have reignited their interest. Uh but then uh had three tours yesterday, she had four tours last Friday. We've had uh, I wanna say Andrew would know this better, but I think five students starting the last week. Um with another, I don't know how many are slated to start on Wednesday, four or five more.
And how how about, how about fall of twenty twenty-one? I think that was kind of the spirit of her question. Have we started talking about students starting next fall, not just mid-years?
Yeah, so it's been a combination of both. When we reached out to my families, they have said, you showed interest, you know, what do you think? A number of them said, absolutely, we're looking at the fall. Like, we're, we're looking at the fall, and the other number have said, like, yeah, let's make this happen right now. I didn't even know you had. Uh you know, the ability to do that, like, it's been a combination of both. We have, as of today, I think we have twenty-five families signed up for kindergarten. Which is a really good sign in January. Um that's a, that's a full section covered. So a- again, we feel confident in our ability to meet the projections in elementary and middle school. And then the upper school, uh we have no reason to think there'll be another. Uh you know, last year was a weird year. There was, there was just this weird exodus in tenth grade. Um we have no reason to think that will happen again, uh but the upper school is just, it's gonna have to grow. As the middle school feeds into it. That's just kinda the reality of where it's at right now. We're gonna have a graduating class this year in the mid to low thirties, and we're going to increase from that every year thereafter. You know, that's, that's just where that's at, so.
Cam, I I I personally put that question up higher up. I know you and I spoke uh spoke to this um when you, when you first were kinda pitching this idea to me and. I think obviously Jamie is gonna have a a role in answering this question as well, but what what feedback have we gotten from families with regards to? The move from our brand-new facility into the upper school? Are we, are we actually seeing a um concerns about the quality of facilities? Are we seeing like uh families who are unaware of what our facility looks like at the upper school? I mean, it's, it's certainly serviceable, but we've got plenty of problems. I mean, I think the, I think the water last year was kind of a wake-up call for a lot of our teachers. Um what was the, uh just try to fill in some of those gaps there for people who aren't in the building every day like Chelsea and I in terms of what, what families are are saying with regards to our our facility.
All defer to Jamie.
Yeah, yeah, so a lot of the times when we do ninth grade orientations, um and the families are in the building, it's a. Um granted, really, the middle school has really only been in operation now going into its second year, so I mean. Um really, this first wave of ninth graders that have come in now, this year's ninth graders. Um we didn't really get to have a full true orientation like we've always had, um and so a lot of families didn't get to see what the upper school looked like. Um and um as families um have been seeing it, um when we, in the very beginning, when we were doing some early tours. Um with like five, five or six families at a time or what have you, a a parent and a student. Um their first initial reaction is like, oh, this is not a school, this is a business building. Um and it's been retrofitted to a school um or to try to have school happen. Um as many of us that are. Um, as many of us that are in the building know that our, our, our hallways are not are, are less than probably four feet wide. Um, you can barely get two bodies down our hallways. Um, and obviously there's just a lot of wear and tear in the building that is, is in need of care at this point in time. Um, and those are the things that's getting harder and harder to hide per se, if we want to say that, or to try to work around. Um, because they are aesthetically right in front of us all the time as far as rip carpets and tripping and things like that. And um, the, I mean, when it rains uh or when it starts to melt with the snow and we have to put our garbage cans in certain spots because there's an actual flow of water coming through um that, you know, that disheartens the spirit of, of students that are there. You know, so I mean, last year it was very interesting. We had to rewrite students quite a few different times as well as for a lengthy period of time because of water leaking and the damage that we had with the water. You know, the, the students are very resilient. Our students uh and our teachers model the fact that, oh, this is something that happens. We just gotta roll with it and make it work. Um, but it's definitely getting to the point where it's very noticeable um in regards to even as you just drive into our parking lot. Um, parents have come in when they pick up stuff for supplies right now um in our DLO and they're just like, you have a major, major pothole that is really hard to get around um in our main entrance. And um, if you don't know that that pothole is there, you could almost take out the bottom of your car. You know, so I mean, there's just, there's definitely significant things that are happening um that's making it more challenging to make it presentable in a way that, that students and families feel wowed or welcomed and knowing that they're coming in into an actual school. Um, so um, we're still doing school and we do it great and we do it very fantastic. And it's just a matter of though that, as Cam has said, the building is aging and it's just, we're, we're trying to do Band-Aid fixes to try to keep making it work. When it's just, it's gonna continually to just cost money, you know, and, and obviously I know that this is a financial this is a financial risk reward type situation. And obviously, um, I'm in favor of a rebuild, but not at the expense of if this is going to tap NLA further financially than it can, can absorb. So um, it's just, we, you know, that's where we're at right now. It's, it's it's very challenging. I have a feeling um we've done a few things. I've done a few walkthroughs with my phone or with my uh computer with families. And they're asking a lot of questions when I do kind of almost like a virtual tour with families. Um, it's just, you know, it is what it is. It, it's, it's a, it's a business building that's been retrofitted into a somewhat school, you know, so um, it would just be nice to actually know that when you walk in, you're walking into a school.
I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to find a way if there, if there is one. I know this is kind of an impossible ask, but is there a way to quantify the ability to uh um, for, for enrollment retention and or using it as a marketing tool? I mean, obviously there weren't just six hundred uh or not six hundred. There wasn't just three hundred kids walking around Forest Lake without an elementary school. We got them into the K eight for a reason uh somehow. And I, and I think the new facility definitely had a a role in that. I mean, we had, they had to have been going to school somewhere. I'm just trying to get a sense of what what, what that would do in order to allow us to retain and recruit.
Yeah, I think there's uh, anytime you do a new building, I think you have about a year and a half to two years of leverage with that, just being new and, and getting them interested, which means getting them in. Uh, but ultimately it'll come down to programming. It'll come down to who we are and, and what we expect. And part of that plays in concert with the elementary students now getting into middle school. And now the middle school having this different set of students they never had before. The students that have been two or three years in the NLA community that they can now do different with. And now they're sending them to the upper school who have five years in, whereas previously they had three, right? All those things build on each other to develop that, you know, I started here and I'm gonna end it here. And there's a lot to say. And the data does bear out that when the vast majority of families start their schooling in one district and remain in that district all the way through. And so if we're getting them in, in the elementary, and we're able to feed them through our system, the numbers haven't borne out yet because we haven't gotten that far, but there's a lot of confidence. And the data would say we are going to carry them through. And the ultimate goal would be that in ninth and tenth grade, instead of bringing in what has traditionally been anywhere from fifteen to thirty new students into that culture. If we're doing this right, doing this in the way that's appropriate and we think we can, instead we'll be bringing in five per grade for various reasons instead of fifteen, instead of a whole new section. Right? And that starts feeding off itself. You start getting waiting lists for students who want to come here because of who we are. But the, the idea of a remodeled building certainly plays into that.
Yeah, I think, I, I mean, with, with the thought of that, you know, I think that it just legitimizes NLA more. You know, I mean, I still think that there is that thought process in our community and surrounding communities where we pull students from that we are still considered kind of this ALC, which again is not a bad thing because there, there has those, those provide opportunities for students that need that type of education. But if we're trying to stick to our mission and vision as far as being college prep and providing the rigor and the necessity of the education that is you know, opportunistic for students to become the citizens that we want them to become. Um, I, I just really think that it, it's important that we have that same building or structure that can meet them all the way through K through twelve. And that is going to be a big retention piece just in and of itself because then we can start going forward with possibly other programming and things like that because of the space that we're gonna have in the building. And I know that Forrest asked about that as far as to the future, you know, if we have this build out, is it going to help hold the enrollment that we have? And and I, I think yes, um, as far as at the upper school. Um, and, and because again, we're not utilizing all of our space effectively or efficiently right now. And there's a lot of space up there that is just kind of dead space or unusable space. Plus the stuff that's above the offices right now, that's all unusable space until it gets built out. So I think that, yeah, we would for sure have that opportunity to increase that enrollment and hold that enrollment really well. Um, and again, just to keep legitimizing North Lakes Academy as far as a, a place to have their students be educated and educated well.
Yeah, I know Chelsea has her hands up, but before, before this, uh, the, the number of students that we could actually hold in our buildings based on just square footage and, you know, i- if, I know this isn't our uh our mantra, this isn't what we hold to, but we could have up to, I think it's thirteen hundred students in our building, like by meeting all of the normal spacing capacity features. We don't want that and we're not choosing that, but to be able to hold uh over nine hundred, yeah, we could absolutely do that. We could absolutely fill those sections. And, and we could do that without any sort of giant increase in FTE or any big change in programming. We can do a
And, and I think, I think maybe Forrest didn't mean this with his question, but just kind of finishing, wrapping up his question. This is kind of, this is kind of the end of it. It uh, and so to speak, right? There's no like expectation for further further build out at either campus. If you were to bundle this all into one section, like we're not talking about additional space that we would need down the road to continue meeting those projections.
No, no, not to meet the projections, not at all. We'll be able to, to buy the land on the other side of the helping hand and have a soccer field at the upper school. That's a grandiose, but that's definitely not necessary to make anything happen.
Great. Okay.
Chelsea, was a question.
Uh, yeah, well, just as I, I'm looking at what Joel is saying here in the chat. A great comparison would be Leela. Um, they're, they're K twelve now, right?
Yep.
Um, with new facilities and we have to compete. Uh, we have great programs to those of you who are board members who haven't seen our building. It's, i- it's, you know, we, I definitely feel like the underdogs going in there, which I do great as the underdog. That's great, but it's hard to to put a face on that, uh, on what we actually really do produce, which is excellent students. If you look at what, what our students go and do and scores on it, put test scores on it, fine. But we, we provide an excellent education and it's just, that's the face of what we are in that building right now does not reflect the experience.
It's, it's lovable.
Yeah, if you stay there long enough to see that we know what we're talking about, that we're, you know, what, you gotta get them in the door.
And that's kind of the reflection. I know only a couple of us were, were around and we were approving the, the build out for the K eight, but I remember that ends up being our, um, I, again, this is not to dictate anyone's uh thought process, but um, I remember we had a lot of conversations about what is the alternative if we just don't? And, and how do we remain competitive? Um, and I think ultimately at the end of the, at the end of the process with the K eight discussion was we won't be, we won't be competitive. Um, and uh, as we see additional learning programs pop up in the, in the community, we have to not be playing catch up if we want to be considered a, a first option, not a second or a third option.
Yeah, and I, this might be a good time where I, I don't think it, it might not be worth like going into all the reasons why we should if we have my members already willing to do it. Is there anyone, not to lie on the spot, but this is what we're meeting for. This is the idea of being comfortable with. Is there anyone that has concerns about attempting to move forward with a remodel of the upper school? Concerns, uh, concerns enough to uh be against the process, to, to speak out against. Obviously there's risk that, that's undoubtedly, but it turns in the way that maybe I don't think this is the best direction of the school.
I just don't know if I have enough, I don't know if I have enough information to say it. Obviously I want to go for it. Of course that would be the goal. That would be what I want to do. That's what I think would be best for the school.
Sure.
If enrollment can bear out. My concern is whether or not enrollment can bear out, especially when we see that we um budgeted for six hundred and thirty students and I realized that COVID played a huge role in that. But I don't necessarily see that ending soon. So my concern, like the, the spirit of my question was are there families that are really starting to show uh significant interest in making changes from wherever they're at to come to NLA? Are we really seeing that a hundred and three new students for next year? And that's including retaining all the students that we have now? What?
What?
What is it that we're looking at that's indicating that that's feasible for next year?
So without, I, I don't know if I can ultimately put your mind at ease today. But what I can say is uh, again, I'll go back to last July, we had six twenty-four. They were applied and in our system as we're coming in the fall. Uh, so the, the drop from six twenty-four down to, down to where we are now is, I, I say this from the bottom of my heart, because I know the, the risk that all this is, right? I, I know this is coming from and I feel like I have to own all of that. Uh, ninety-nine, five percent of that was we're gonna stay where we're at because we just don't know what this looks like. We have been able to confidently bring in ten to fifteen students per grade level, K through five from, mostly from Forest Lake, but from other schools too. Introducing new, not just those that are currently with us moving forward, but introducing new. The ones that are with us are staying with us, um, because they're doing a great job of servicing them. Um, right now, you know, in second grade and then third grade, uh, we don't have full sections for, we don't have full two sections, but we have two teachers. So those two teachers are serving uh, a total of twenty-eight kids or thirty-two kids really well. And, and they're not gonna go anywhere because they're getting really good service. We feel very confident about our level of retention because our mission hasn't changed because we remained a, a small, safe, successful school. Um, and we haven't thrown anything at the families that they weren't expecting. Uh, I think we've handled the COVID education process as well as we can. In fact, I would say better than most. And I base that off of uh, a few of our families within the school who have kids in other districts. And what they've reported in terms of what they're seeing here and what they're experiencing there. But I don't have a you know, a- anything other than anecdotal baseline that I think we're still serving kids really well. But no doubt.
I'm not, I'm not concerned about retention. I'm concerned about growth.
Can I interject there as far as with the upper school? I mean, we've got eight students that have never toured North Lakes Academy, have only been going on what I have been communicating with them as far as what they've also heard from other families as far as how we've handled the hybrid situation and the distance learning situation at the upper school. And we already have eight um students that are for sure come in our way from the Forest Lake School District in, in test, in anticipation that one, um, if, if we open full in person, they're just happy with the fact that we are smaller. Two, the fact that how our teachers have incorporated and implemented hybrid and distance learning to keep students accountable, um, as well as not just accountable, but progressing in academics and holding the expectation for the um, for the progress of learning for the students. And so they're just like, whether you're in person next year, whether you're hybrid or whether you're distance learning, we want to come to your school because your teachers and what you have for a philosophy right now for your um, for whatever learning model we're basically in is that they, the, the education is still mattering or still, is still making an impression. It matters. Um, and so I, I, I fully believe right now, just in the first week of January, we've already hooked eight families without them even seeing our building, um, just because of the education that we're producing um, through the different scenarios that are happening right now with COVID. And you know, I, I'm, I'm a firm believer that if you build it, they will come from Field of Dreams. Um, especially for something like Joel was saying with the newness. Um, I think that that's only going to back up what Chelsea was saying as well, that now our building reflects the product that is happening. Um, so I'm happy with getting eight, eight families right off the bat in the first ba- uh, week of school um back from break just because of what has been um transpiring within the community as far as word of mouth, because these are a hundred percent all word of mouth right now. And we haven't even really, I know that the marketing has been happening through new enrollment through that, but we haven't really like pushed, pushed yet. Um, in regards to what I think we could if we know that this was happening. So I, I get where you're coming from, Sarah, and I completely understand. I have the same conversation with Cam all the time is what's gonna happen if, if, if it doesn't happen, you know, and um, because I have the same concern as far as where are these kids gonna come from? So I, I hear what you're saying for sure.
Jamie, if you, a few of them have, have went. Um, we lost a couple last week. Uh, what, what are the reasons that they're giving for going? We never get that.
Yep. So they, um, a couple of them are leaving um to literally go to a hundred percent online schools because online schools don't require you to take a full-time load. Um, that, that is the number one reason why many of our students are going to complete online schools. Is some of the schools that they are attending only requires them to take three classes or four classes or even maybe one class, depending on where they are with graduation. Um, so they don't have to take a full entire full-time course load.
So is that? How do I put this? Do we see them coming back from online schools? Not necessarily those people, but students who have gone online because of the pandemic. Do you or Cam, you can speak to this too. Do you see them being drawn back into classrooms?
Yeah, I think so. At the upper school level, um, having conversations is why they're leaving. If we were to, and they know we're coming back to in-person. Um, but they are still concerned with the fact that even when we're in person, then we're gonna be flip-flopping based on possible contact tracing or if, or if teachers get sick. Um, so they just don't want to be flipping. Um, if they said that they knew a hundred percent that we would be in person without any more flips, they would not even have the choice of going to online school. They would be back in the building.
Even though we make them take a full load.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I would say at the K eight level, the families that wanted to come here and ultimately chose not to they, the reason they wanted to come was because of what they're dealing with in their own school, right? I mean, family doesn't come, doesn't come unless there, there's some dissatisfaction. That dissatisfaction they're feeling ultimately, for the most part, was masked over by what COVID presented. So by going to distance learning, like mu- many of them felt like the product there isn't gonna be substantially better or the worse than the product here, which is probably true to a point. But it also meant that they weren't in that classroom experiencing the same difficulties that led them to look at North Lakes or other schools in the beginning. So once that starts to come back and those dissatisfaction pieces will be more in play. I hate to say it like that, but that's true. That's why other people look to move places. Like those will present again. And again, I feel strongly that that'll, that'll result in a number of families looking our way once again. Once again, um, but again, uh, so the the truth in all this again is there's risk involved either way. Either way, there's significant risk involved. Enrollment drives everything. We are absolutely doing all we can to make enrollment happen always, but also we're we're not selling out. For just the student to enroll in our school. And by that, I mean. If the family approaches us and we really truly feel that this isn't going to be a good fit for that family. You know, if they're coming in in eighth grade and they're looking for stuff that we know that we don't offer. Or that we know that just i- is going to grind against who we know we are. We will tell them that, well, we'll say this ultimately, this, I don't know how good a fit this will be for you. We would, we're going to play that game or be transparent with that. All the way through, we're not going to bring in people just to boost numbers. Uh, but the other side of that is if we do this right, if we remain true to that. The family then is going to come in, they're going to experience what we told them, they're gonna, they're, yup, this is true, they they held their word. And then they're going to share that with others, and that's going to start to happen kind of repeatedly and over and over until that, uh. The whole, um, reputation, the reputation takes hold, that this is a school that serves students well. They're transparent in who they are, they know who they are, they're transparent in it, and they don't back down from it, and that's going to work for most. It's not going to work for some, and the some it doesn't work for, we'll be transparent with, we'll let them know, like, ultimately, I don't see this being a good fit. And and oftentimes when that happens, the family agrees, they say, yeah, we don't want to take on this battle either, like, we get it. Where, how can you help us find somewhere else? And we're happy to do that, and that happens more often than any of you may know, but. Uh, i- it all comes onto enrollment always, you know, to sum it up, it is, that's just the truth of it. And knowing that, I still think it's worth it to pursue, uh, taking all this on. Taking on the remodel and and everything that comes with it.
Just a, just a couple of questions. I I know we want to, we want to probably tie this up in the next ten minutes or so, we so we can, uh, so we can all go home. Or I guess log off, but, uh, I don't, I don't want Jeff's question to get buried. He did ask about the, um, uh, about the, uh, addition of. Uh, fine arts, uh, um, products of the at the middle school. Can you comment on that for for a moment, how this would impact those offerings?
Yeah, Andrew, you want to speak to that?
Um, well, I mean, it's, obviously, it's it's in the works for next year to add that third specialist. That is at least the plan, right? And I think elementary, if you just take the K eight building alone or the elementary enrollment alone, um, uh, we're in a position to do that. And and third to your question, I don't think two hundred students in the next two years, which is what that budget forecast calls for. I don't think that is going to be an issue at all. I think year three, year three, year four, year five might be a little bit more challenging. But I I think for sure in the next couple of years, two hundred new students is not out of the question, especially if. There's any certainty around everybody starting next fall normally. And then I think there might be an opportunity to look at making year three, year four a little easier by thinking about an online component. Uh, you don't need square footage for online students. Uh, we have our entire staff that's more familiar with offering online. Um, as far as I understand it, we still get lease aid for online students. Um, but as far as making sure those programming pieces that attach to our charter. Um, are in place at elementary, I I, we're on track for that next year. Um, it may not be exactly what we want it to be at full scale, but, um. If we bring in a hundred through students district wide and add the sections that we plan to add for next year. Uh, we should be able to add at least one more program, K five. Maybe not both art and music fully, but at least one.
Forrest had a question about percentage of specialized students attending, um, and and potentially putting that a strain. Uh, yes and no, I think our elementary these two years. Um, I would say it's right way, the percentage of specialized students has been lower than what we initially expected it to be. Uh, I think we're in a very good position right now in terms of staffing and being able to service at the elementary level. The middle school level has been strained, uh, but these last two years, uh, large groups. Last year and then at the end of this year, we'll be moving on to the upper school and the future specialized enrollment at middle school seems much more manageable. And, uh, within our current capacity, the upper school, we might have to look at, uh, um, adding. With the specialized population there, nothing drastic, but something where, again, we continue to service students well. Uh, many of you would have no reason to know this, but, uh, we have been very diligent in keeping our case managers. Uh, able to service a smaller number of students than likely any other school around as a whole. Uh, we, our trade off is we'll bring in one more staff member and have them all have caseloads of twelve to fifteen. Versus not bringing in that staff member and having them caseloads of twenty. Um, and I think that served us really well, and we'll continue to operate in that manner. Another reason why we can is because specialized funding. Is reimbursed at ninety-five percent, which is, I don't see why other schools don't do it that way, but that's their decision. Our ours is to make sure that the capacity of our teachers is at a spot where they can still remain very effective. Consideration, absolutely, but I don't think that's enough to, um, consider whether or not we would move forward with something like this.
So, um, are there any, uh, other big questions? Because I I I think that, um, our our next logical step is to. Uh, give us the weekend to think about any other big overarching questions we might have, um, and then. Uh, based on Cam's email that he sent, um, prior to to the email today. Um, was to, would be to on Monday, um, consider in our meeting to authorize him to, uh, negotiate terms. Um, again, that is not a, uh, that is not a stamp on the final package. Uh, we have to, um, negotiate those terms. And then approve what would go to market, and then ultimately we approve the offer that we get on the open market as well. So there's really a three-step process here. The first step is just to authorize Cam to work with our, um, our financial team to. To get a package together that we could determine if there is interest out there. At this stage in the K eight, three years ago or whatever it was, we were. We were certain this is all going to go perfectly, um, and, uh, and we got a package together that we felt really good about. Um, and along with all these other schools and, uh, and things got cloudy pretty quickly, so, um, I think we we, we don't want to get too ahead of ourselves, but, um. But just to give him the, uh, opportunity, uh, I think we should take the weekend to think about and then, uh, tie that up on Monday.
I just have one question for Jan. Jan, how are you feeling with all those numbers that were put out there and possible options? Um, enrollment numbers, cash balance on hand, well, how are you feeling with all that?
Uh, I guess I don't know. I just got the budget yesterday to look at, so.
Okay.
Uh, I I'm always very cautious and very. Maybe too cautious. If if the, I I just want us to be, if if the percentages for the. The money we get goes, like you said, over five point two five, that made me comfortable when he said, then that's probably not going to work. Because last time we were kind of in a position where we were a little more desperate than we need, maybe should have been. So this is, we're not in that position this time. And and we don't know the future. We don't know how long COVID is going to last or what else might be coming down the pike. It could get really good, it could get. You know, it's just uncertain.
Twenty twenty-one is going to be crazy, Jan, crazy.
It's starting out that way.
I've heard this.
Yeah, so one thing I do want to make clear that maybe this will help alleviate if if there's angst still remaining, which I would understand. The way this process is shaping out to be is we're going to put together a package for the full, um, thirty-two million. Uh, we'll put that together, we'll we'll put that in front of potential investors and then we'll get feedback on it. And if the feedback on it, this is prior to going to market, the feedback is lukewarm or or iffy. We have the ability then to pull that back and then only present the the refinance Plan B option. Which I I think that needs to be, just that has to happen. The the ability to refinance and build out the cave building, I hope we're at a points of order that that's a, that that's a go, that has to happen that way. But so we put out the full package, we get a response on it. And if that response comes back positive, you know, a- as we anticipate that it would, yup, then it's a go. But if it doesn't, if we get a lukewarm response, we have the ability to pull that back and then reoffer just the refinance package. And which, by the way, the refinance package is, it's, it's pretty attractive for, uh, firms to look at. We're an established school. I mean, there's a lot of positives there for just to refinance the remodel, a little more to it.
Sorry, Cam.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Um, who who is this feedback from? Or the community or what are, or you and Andrew and Jamie or?
No, the feedback comes, so what happens is it's actually a, an investment call. So we work with, uh, his name is Bruce Sorensen. He's one that worked with us on the prior project. He works with Baird, um, a company in Minneapolis. They do the financing, they do projects like this, right? And it's his job to seek out others that are interested. So there are a bunch of companies that have. These buckets of money slated for investments and getting returns on those investments and so on. And, uh, there there's a big one in Minneapolis, the biggest one in in the charter world is a company called Nuveen. And they have a set amount of money each year they want to dedicate to projects like this because they make money off it, right? They they do the deal, they get the interest, and then they they take that money and and spend it other places, right? So those are the people that we seek out. So there will be a day where we go on this call. And any investment firm that might be interested in the product gets on the call and they listen to us make our pitch. And they might ask questions, it might provide feedback, but then after that, Bruce will reach out with them and say, what do you think? You know, where do you think you might be with this product? And that's where we start, you know, the ideal is to get in a bidding war, right? The idea is the company says, oh, I absolutely want this at five percent. They almost says, so do I. And then then Bruce says, well, would you go to four point eight, right? I mean, that's where that stuff starts happening. But, uh, you know, just for full disclosure and full context, last time when we did this, we did the call and we had eighteen. Investment firms on the receiving end of that call, uh, to which the response from our team, our our personal North Lakes team was. This is great, like what, that's a really good response. Usually there's like four to six, you know, there's a lot of interest here. But the issue at that time was we went to market in November. When a lot of those firms had already spent most of their money that they had allocated to this type of project. And they were in on the call just to listen to what the deal could be, but they weren't really a player, if you will, because they didn't have money to put towards it. And it ended up, uh, just being a tough situation where the market fluctuated at the time it did and and we had to. End up in the deal we did, but going out early in this year, and this is something you guys should know, uh, in twenty twenty. There were only three deals in the state of Minnesota that happened, only three charter deals that went to market and got financing. They all got financing, but there were only three. This year, there's zero on the docket right now. As far as it goes today, we will be the first, which hypothetically would mean that there would be a lot of interest in us. Being a local, a a lot of companies want to, you know, spend and and work local, so there's a lot of, uh, potential leverage there. Um, it's just, it's a whole different world than when it was in two thousand and eighteen, went to market before, but. Uh, that's how the process works. So we have the ability to go with the full package. If the interest isn't there, we have the ability to pull back. And then put out a, a smaller but more attractive package. We know that's a more attractive package, but it doesn't get us what we're seeking ultimately as a school.
Thanks, Ben.
Yeah.
But in the last year, bucket of money, then that just like phased out. I said, which one of you do I see for that?
Yeah.
It's Jamie is the answer.
Okay, good, good, yeah, I'm touring soon, so.
All right, any, uh, any other big questions, um, that we feel like we need now as as we kind of, uh, think about, um, I think about this? All right, um, so, uh, again, just, uh, as a couple of quick reminders, uh, we will meet again on, uh, Monday at our regular, um, at our regular time. Uh, Chelsea did send the agenda out for that, um, yesterday, and, uh, the only other piece is, uh, I need you all to finish your. Um, uh, your board self-evaluation, so I can put that data together. You don't have to log off and do it immediately, but if you can make sure to have those documents done. Uh, by tomorrow mid-afternoon, that'll give me enough time to, um, to assemble it, it's it's pretty quick. So, um, if there are no further questions or concerns, um, I would entertain a motion to adjourn at six or five thirty-one.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Forrest. Can I get a second?
A second.
All right, thank you, Laura. Any other questions?
I think they want to stick around. They're not really.
Yeah, they're not eager, yeah, not eager. They're all, uh, they're all playing, uh, snake on their computers on the other screen.
Ooh, why you gotta rat me out? Well, stop recording before you say that, gee.
All right, we have a, uh, motion to adjourn on the table. Uh, member Thielen, how do you vote?
That's aye.
Uh, member Bodine?
Aye.
Member Hanson?
Aye.
Member Schlesser?
Aye.
Member Devil R?
Aye.
Member Florzak?
Aye.
Member Rep?
Aye.
And the Dicky crew.
I was going to have Briggs say aye, but I'm sure that would not be formal, so.
Okay, I think we, I think we need to hear your voice, but I appreciate it. All right, uh, the, uh, meeting is adjourned by all means. If you have additional questions, um, prior to Monday, feel free to reach out to Cam. Um, or Jamie or Andrew or Jan, whoever you feel is most appropriate. I thank you all for coming, for giving up a chunk of your Saturday, and we'll see you in a couple days.